He's very, he takes after his dad, he's very talented in math. But he's called up after his first class, he had no good with calculus too. And he was shocked that he doesn't question, didn't waste any time in talks about it. Watching the classroom and hoping this is open enough for your books and I started.
Sounds about concrete.
Sounds like everything's on.
That's not the violent first thing, not even a pass around with small things. Spend you to be uncalculus.
Good evening, everyone. It is time for the regular August meeting of Garden Cities Planning and Zoning Commission. It's Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023. The record could show that all commissioners are present, Commissioner Shepard, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Montoya, and Commissioner Wild. So we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, in the great justice of law.
Okay, so for staff, any changes to our agenda this evening?
None by staff.
Okay, thank you. Moving to the consent agenda, right now it contains only the minutes from our past two meetings, June 21st, 2023, and July 19th, 2023, which actually was postponed. And then from time to time, we will add items on this evening's agenda, on each evening's agenda to the consent agenda as well. In order to do that, though, the each application has to qualify based on a couple of questions that I ask the room. So starting with that, there are a couple that we thought we would, or I would try to see if we can move to the consent agenda. The first one is item A under unfinished business. That CUP FY 2023-9 applicant Kelly Gonzalez with Vita Properties LP is requesting to install a bike null for public use located at 510 East 41st Street in the C2 General Zoning District. So questions ours, number one, is there anyone in the audience who would like to give public testimony on that item? Doesn't look like there is. Is the applicant present for that item? Great. Please state your name for the record.
Mike Talbot Vita Properties.
Okay, have you had the opportunity to review the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and draft decision, including the draft conditions of approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you agree and consent to these documents in the affirmative, including all conditions of approval?
I do with one question. That question is on the maintenance side. I believe the staff is suggesting that the city will maintain it.
So we'll need to, we'll just, we'll just hear your, hear your item then, and we'll just talk specifically about that. When, when you.
I saw a question, because I assume that will be something that you guys as the city would want to be the main.
Yeah, we'll just talk about it. So we'll just hear it, but that's, we'll just raise that question, then we'll go, then we'll, okay, sounds good. Okay, so we will hear that item. The other one, we were gonna hear CUP FY 2023-10 as well. And then, but the under new business subdivision FY 2022-7 Quad Six Subdivision, preliminary plat processed as a planned unit development. Jaden Schneider with Bronze Bow Land is requesting a residential subdivision consisting of nine residential lots and one common lot located at 4640 North Adams Street in the R3 medium density zoning district. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to give public testimony on that item? Okay. Is the applicant present? Great, you could just stay there, you don't have to. But if you could state your name for the record pretty clearly and loudly, so the mics will pick it up.
James Schneider, D.O.S.
Okay, and have you had the opportunity to review the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and draft decisions, including the draft conditions of approval?
Yes, we have.
Okay, great. Do you agree and consent to these documents in the affirmative, including all conditions of approval?
Yes.
Okay. Does, and the last question is, does staff or any member of the commission have any reason that they feel this item should be heard?
No.
Okay, all right, so we can add that one to the consent agenda as well. Okay, so that said, I think we are ready for our motion to, to the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown?
I move approval of the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the June 21st, 2023, and the July 19th, 2023 minutes. And in addition, subdivision FY 2022, number seven, Quad Six Subdivision.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And aye. Okay. So you're good to go. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So then we'll jump right in, sir. Looks like you're ready to go. So if you could state your name and address again to get us going on, and I'm just gonna read the item again. CUP FY 2023-9 applicant Kelly Gonzalez with Vita Properties LP is requesting to install a bike null for public use located at 510 East 41st Street in the G, excuse me, C2 General Zoning District. So you're up.
Okay, thank you. Again, Mike Talbot Vita Properties. And consistent with the conditions submitted to us, we're accepting all, except the clarification on the maintenance side.
Okay.
Once we've completed the nulls and the specifications and the acceptance by the state and the city, we would assume that the city would be the one to maintain that.
Okay.
I think that's what the document says.
Okay, okay. So thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Nope. Okay, so we'll just hear from staff.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, not sure which mic is actually working, but the decision document for this conditional use permit for the bike null does have a condition in there, which is item number three. And in summary, it does state that the city will take on responsibility and maintenance after the construction of the bike null.
Okay.
With that, I stand for questions.
Okay, so you've, you're, you're good with all that then? Okay, all right. So I don't think you have a rebuttal then. Okay. And we already know that there's no one that wants to give public testimony, but I'm gonna ask again, just to be on the safe side. Is there anyone in the room that wants to give public testimony on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing then. Any discussion among the commission members on this? Okay. So let's move to our motion then on this one.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Wild, thank you.
I move approval of CUP FY 2023-9. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. I think Commissioner Montoya was the second on that, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
And aye. So you're good? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is CUP FY 2023-10 applicant Chris Keith with Idaho E40 LLC is proposing to allow industry flex as permitted use located at 107 East 40th Street in the C2 General Zoning District. So the applicant, great, yeah, if you could start off by your name and address, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm Chris Keith with Idaho 40 East 40 LLC, address 129 Dover Street, Los Scados, California, 95032.
I'm Patrick McKeegan. What's your next address? 249 South Inette Street, Boise, Idaho. I'm the architect of the project.
Thank you. So you guys have as much as 15 minutes, if you need it, to present your, to present what you're doing?
I didn't know staff presented.
No, and I'm sorry, it's something I didn't do, this, that's my fault. So you guys go first, and then staff will follow you. We'll do a public hearing after that, if there is any, you'll have the opportunity to do a rebuttal, if you'd like. And then the commission members will discuss your application. Sounds great. Appreciate that.
Can we refer to, I didn't do my pointer, so.
And it's all from that submittal date, so you have the different options.
Okay.
Just scroll down.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I'd like to stress my appreciation to Hannah and the staff for working with us over the last month or so to, to work with what we think is a pretty straightforward site, but it does offer some challenges because it's an older development in a, in an area that has undergone new new requirements from the development plan. It's an existing industrial building with a storage yard and an office, small office area. Currently, there is no landscaping existing, and the parking is just basically off of, off of the street. What we're proposing is we're gonna do some remodeling to the inside of the building, upgrade the restrooms to handicap standards, take out some walls, the back of the building has some significant structural issues that we're gonna take care of. And then we'll start looking for a tenant. The reason for the conditional use permit is to gain additional zoning, so we can open the pool of potential tenants to a greater group of people, which actually would act, and some of those would actually be more in line with what the future of the city of vision envisions this area to be than the existing, you know, more harder commercial uses, industrial uses. As indicated in the staff report, front of the building, I think we've done a pretty good job of complying with the, with the intent of the code. We've worked with the option that has to detach sidewalk, but that places the landscaping for that sidewalk in the ACHD right of way. So we'll have to negotiate with them on the license agreement to do that. But that gives us a six-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk, a two-foot landscape strip along the building, so we can have some landscaping along the building to soften that. I don't like to put sidewalks up against buildings because in the winter, it might go somewhere and then it tears up everything underneath it. The basic landscape requirements for the project are eight parking spaces. We've provided eight. One of those is a handicap space. We have kept, we're moving the existing fence, security fence at the front, back approximately 25 feet to align with the building to give us two compact spaces and a and a handicap space in the, in the front. And then the back five spaces and the bicycle parking would be behind the fence. We anticipate if it's a business that requires public to come there on a regular basis, and that gate will just be left open if people be able to come in there and park and park their bicycles. We're required to have I think, I believe, three trees. We're providing five. I checked with Idaho Power and they said, there's a, because there's power line goes right, and cable lines go right down down the property line in front. And they said, as long as my trees don't grow to a height of more than 24 feet, then I'm fine. So I've selected two species that I have had really good, really good luck with. Crab apples in two different colors and a for the trees on, and on the street level, at the street. You can keep those trimmed where they get about 16, 18 feet high. Nice color in the, in the spring, you know, foliage during the winter or foliage during the day, during the year, and then in the winter, they have a nice, nice trunk pattern, big pattern. The back two trees, I've selected an eastern red bud, which is a taller tree and a forward tree to kind of a backdrop. There aren't no lines back there, power lines. So it'll act kind of a back, as a backdrop to the, to the trees of in the front. It'll also provide shade during time, during, sometimes for the, for the parking spaces. The rest of the ground covers are things that I have used and liked and know and work. Cotaniasters, which are kind of a, you have them out from the building here, the ready to green things. Red twig dogwood, which is a really nice, nice plant because in the, again, in the in the spring, it's got really nice leaves and stuff and things. And then the winter, when its leaves lie back, you have this really intricate red colored twig system that acts as a nice backdrop against our light gray building. Issues that came up in the staff report that we have, that we'd like, we'd like to discuss is, first of all, the fencing. The existing fencing across the front is chain link. Down the side is a wooden and metal fence on the other, on the adjacent property. Across the back is chain link, which is owned by the other property, and then we have a small section of chain link on Osage Street about 15 feet long. It is, is ours with barbed wire on top. That's, and that's a wooden fence. In the ordinance, it states that that little, little piece on Osage Street needs to be dropped to a three and a half foot fence, which then now gives us absolutely no security for our building. So what we're proposing, and because on, across the alley and on down Osage Street on both sides, are chain link fences or plastic fences that are six feet high, so we we'd be the only person in the block with three and a half foot fence, and quite frankly, if we do it, we're just gonna come back 10 feet and put up a a security fence, because type of businesses we anticipate. I, I understand the desire for Osage Streets. I understand that over time, this may become more of an area where you'll have residential or office uses or things or parking lots where you won't be worried about people, you know, somebody jumping the fence to get across the parking lot or look in the yard. But for now, we're gonna have people that need, are gonna be using the yard for for materials and equipment and stuff, and we want to be able to keep that secure. We will take down the razor wire because I agree, that's not a, we don't want it to look like this.
And replace with whatever is desired.
Yeah, we'll replace that fence. The fence along the back, the chain link, we just want that to to stay because we don't own it and it's out of sight, out of mind from the, from the public. The one on the north side, we're gonna come inside of the, of the existing fence that's there on our side of the property line, put in the metal fencing that we submitted with our, with our, we submitted with our application, which is it's not a wrought iron product, but it's not a chain link. It's a horizontal and vertical bar system, say it's pre-manufactured in panels, and then you come in and just set the panels. We're gonna use the same thing across the front. The cracky product, used on other projects. And it's, you know, economical, a lot more economical than wrought. Along the talk about sidewalk?
Landscape.
The landscaping, okay, on the landscaping, two things. Along the north property line and the back, and the back property line, we're required to have a five-foot landscape strip. What we have done is I've come back about 60 feet into the property where the parking is and put in, those are gonna be sky pencil, holly, and a orange rocket barber, which are basically plants that go like this to give some height and get, and meet the, the height requirements. But those are just in a two-foot, in a two-foot setback. And then from, from then back, we're just gonna have our, our new, our new fencing material. And the idea there is, is at some point, maybe the fence on the other side will go away, and we've got our nice fence there already. The other side of the fence, it's just an industrial property, a lot of stuff, machinery and stuff stored there. So it really what we tried to do is basically overachieve on the front of the building, where the public are gonna be seeing it, first gonna be seen from the public, making a really nice thing. We have not been able to achieve the 5% landscape area outside the setbacks inside the property. What we have been able to do is because the, the right of way landscaping is about 2.5%. If we add that to the 2, 2.7% that we have outside the setback, we can achieve a 5, you know, a 5% number. In order to get to that 5% number, I would have to come in and put literally a 20 by 25 foot square in the middle of my parking lot here somewhere, which to me makes, I I, I don't, I don't know what that would, what I would achieve in this type, in this, in this location. And I think I have have hit, have hit the high points. We've, this is a rendering, we just finished up last night, yesterday, of what the building's gonna look like. Right now, it is just basically T111 siding that the guy got, got gray paint on sale and, and just, everything's gray. You know, and we're gonna take that and along the alley, there's a kind of a
corrugated metal.
It's corrugated metal, it's in really bad shape. And over the over the years, the highway district, as they repaved Osage, they've just kind of built it up to where now literally the grade is higher than, we've had some water intrusion into the building, so we've we're working with the highway district, and they're, we're gonna come in and they're gonna solve their grading problem. We're gonna pull off all that old siding, and we're gonna put new, new siding along Osage, the front of the building and, and, and the front visible portion of the warehouse. The lower end, this would be darker, gray color in a horizontal pattern. And then above that will be a vertical pattern in a kind of a dull gray or light gray color. The accents will be black, black trim on the edges and around the, around existing windows. Think I've touched on everything that needed to be addressed. Is there anything you wanna add?
No, I think we're just gonna.
Okay, so I just stand with questions.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Brown? Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions. And my questioning and my comments that may come out, I don't want anybody to think that I'm in any way criticizing what Hannah or the staff did or what they required you to do. Because they done a, did a really good job of putting the requirements on you that are required by the code. But on the commission, we have a little bit of leeway that she doesn't. So, and so you have a real problem site here. It's because before ACHD was formed, the city didn't require that street section that was in Osage to be wider, and then they allowed buildings to be built like yours, where the building line, I mean, there were no setbacks required, so the building line there on the south actually corresponds with the property line. So how could you comply with our requirements that we have for setbacks and those kind of things? Or any requirements having to do with making a reasonable streetscape out of Osage? That being said, I would like, first of all, and I do have some questions here. You can see the little space that you're talking about, which is 15 foot long, where there is currently a six-foot fence with some concertina on it. And it, that is on the right side in that picture. And if you comply with our code and you don't get a waiver, you would, you're saying you would have to put a 10-foot fence, and it probably is about halfway back in that rectangle. I think, is that an awning cover that's on the back? Correct?
That's an open path.
Yeah. So you have a space there that, looking at it, it's about 20 by 15 and which you would have a six-foot fence 10 feet back from that fence that would be three and a half foot. What would you do with that space? What would be possible for you to do anything with that space? Other than use Roundup to keep weeds down?
Yeah, it would probably become a, an extreme desert landscape, a native, native rock. And that, I, I give it some thought to that. I don't think a tree's gonna do really well there. You know, we could make the effort to probably run a, run a water line back there and maybe put in some, some stone and desert plants, but you know, in a lot of ways, if you look, if you lower that fence line, now all of a sudden, not only you're gonna see our little back part, you're gonna see all of the back of the die on this side. Obviously, you moved up in directions here because of the
On the right side.
But on the right side, you're gonna see all of his, his, his stuff.
Let's cut to the chase. What you're telling me is that's probably gonna be an area that you might have some rock in there, and you're gonna go out twice a year and put Roundup on it. Is that correct?
I, I, I'm not a fan of Roundup.
We're gonna do the best we can to comply with what the city wants us to do. Ideally, we'll do, the fencing that we're proposing is very nice looking. You know, if they required us to do wrought iron, actually, the costs are very similar. I think ours is better looking than wrought iron, and everybody has it. I suppose we could run a water line out there and maybe do some greenery on the fence itself, because the way the fence lends itself, I think you could probably train some plants and make it green and provide two things. It would give you color, and I guess it would give you security. That's probably the best. If it wasn't there, then it's probably consistent with what you had suggested.
All right, thank you. We'll probably get an opportunity to talk about that later. Now, the next thing I want to talk about, we may need Hannah's help to do this. This is revision number three, which complies with our requirements with regard to the sidewalk in the front. You already explained what some of the problems. I would like revision number one, which I think you indicated in one of your submissions, it was your preferred solution, which has the sidewalk, a six-foot sidewalk that is adjacent to the curb. Could you put that up for us? That revision, is that possible? Okay.
You want the attached sidewalk?
The one with the sidewalk next to the curb.
In, in this one, we just made the assumption that where I said parking, that we'd add a number of spaces, but we could, even in this one, you can see it has three spaces on the, on the upper parking area. I removed one of those, and I removed the space from down below and moved those into the backyard, give me room to put a couple of trees in there on, on number three, so.
But it is my question. If trouble like my sound system tonight. I like the landscaping that you, you put in revision three, and it shows what landscaping it does. But let's suppose that we, we managed to get to a waiver. And before I do that, let me ask the following question, just so I can clarify for everybody. The only sidewalk on this side of the street in that block is on the property, is immediately to the south. That piece of property, the sidewalk is next to the curb, except for the place where it goes around a box, it goes by an electric box. So just on the other side of Osage, it's, it's in from the curb, but the rest of it is against the curb. Is that correct?
Correct. That's correct, sir.
If we were to give you a waiver and you were allowed to put a six-foot sidewalk in there, how would you go about adjusting the, the, or your landscaping that you put that on that? If we did that, would you be able, and would you prefer that pretty much with the landscaping you have, only instead of being like, you located it right up, it out there, it would be back behind it?
I would, I would probably still take one parking space from the upper one and one parking space from the, from the lower parking area on the right side, and move those to the back and adjust the parking a little bit, give And adjust the parking a little bit to give me room so I can put in. Uh, I, I think I might be able to still get my, my five trees in there. Okay, and then the other landscaping is just the voices of stuff and I can. As we used, I used to work for guys and we shrub it up. I just.
Would you prefer that?
I.
Or would you prefer vision number three, which complied with our requirements, the way it's written?
I suppose if there was any issues down the line and we needed to comply now. And it helps us and you guys, I'm fine with the compliance on number three. I'm sensitive to the parking. Uh, pushing more parking in the back a little bit. It wasn't, uh, our original choice, but, um, to the extent that. We don't have any issues down the line, we decided that we'll push some of the parking in the back. I would ideally, if there was a way to. I do like the landscape in the front because I think it will make it look a lot nicer. How we do that and keep the parking up front, Pat? I don't know. How could we do that? ACHD and or the city, I'm not sure who dictates. On that, uh, for the, you know, required trees and landscape.
Um, ACHD. All they care about is, is it really is a sidewalk. Uh, the trees, what concerns me is. Like in both scenarios, my planners are pretty narrow anyway, seven, three, you know, seven foot. Three inches or so. Normally we like to have at least eight feet inside dimensions for. Trees to grow and. Islands or something like that.
So it sounds to me like you're sort of indifferent between the two then.
I, I, I absolutely am. I just, it just. It just really, I think. Not to tell you how you do your job, but I think you need to decide. When you, if you wanna continue to attach sidewalks down that side of, of four East Street as the properties to the north develop. Then, then fine. If you wanna use us as a precedent to pull it back. I, that's.
Even then, I think they're gonna have a hard time. I think compliance will be difficult for us, only for the reason of the, as you mentioned, the. Way this building was built fifty or sixty years ago was the location, so it really cramps things up. That's why we're having difficulty with the. Five percent and doing the best we can to, with the intent to meet with the code and beautify.
I think I'm gonna answer. Thank you. Any, any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Shepard, were you motioning for a question?
Thank you for your presentation, Commissioner, um. Or Mister Chairman, yes, I had a question for the applicants. I, I saw in one part in here where you're talking about, um, you would vet the future tenants. As far as the industry flex goes to make sure that there was no noise and I saw the industry flex had like motorcycle. Vehicle service in there, so I just was, wanted a little more information on that, just to make sure that that was.
We didn't have any specific, okay, I'm sorry. Um, we didn't have any specific use at this point. I think, um. The, um, original occupants of the building, um. Uh, were grandfathered in with what they had done. I think they were very light in use, relatively speaking, um, and, um. I think the industry flex to us opened the door, uh, to allowing things. Now, I did notice in the inter- industry flex that they did talk about. Uh, noise constraints, uh, between certain hours, uh, along with, you know, noise vibrations and other, you know. Uh, toxics and other things like that, so, um. It, we didn't really get into, this would be a great space for automotive or anything like that. I would. Guess that the intent really necessi- for us is more kind of, um, to, uh. A construction vendor, where, this is why we kind of intended for industry flexes that, um. Into, speaking with Hannah and staff, was that if you had. An occupant that needed to have either electrical cabinets. Uh, construction and they wanted a secured yard, it's tough to come by and they don't comply underneath the current zoning, so the industry flex would allow them to have that. And that was kind of more along the lines of what we really wanted, not necessarily a, allowed kind of, you know, noise generator. But more along the lines of having, uh, a bit of storage, open storage and secured in the building itself. That was kind of, without having to come back every time, so we figured we'd just. Try for industry flex and just get it straightened out, the whole building and the sidewalk, so down the line, if we did have a tenant. It wasn't in the purview of the city. We just did everything straight up and. Uh, both with the building and the improvements itself.
Okay.
Did I answer that okay, is that?
I, yes, my main concern was just that it wasn't gonna be loud for. Like, I was thinking like a motorcycle sales or the, or not sales, but, um, repair.
Gotcha. I think anything, if it was allowed under inter- industry flex, we would. Like to try to be able to obtain that use, uh, if there are conditions put on those, uh, with regards to time and things like that. Decibels, I mean, obviously, it's not our intent to, I know there's, it's in a residential overlay and the intent is to. Ultimately build out and people don't wanna be around that, so whatever conditions would be put on something like that. We'd consider and look at for sure.
Thank you.
Do that, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Shepard. Any other questions for the applicants? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, you'll have a chance to come back up. Uh, we'll hear from staff.
I'm just pulling up an aerial on Google for reference as I go through the staff report. Um, but this is conditional use permit, uh, two thousand twenty-three dash zero zero ten. It is located at one oh seven East Fortieth Street. And. The applicant is Chris Keith with Idaho Forty LLC and they are requesting the use of industry flex. With, and the property is within the general or the C two general commercial, uh, zoning district. In and of itself, the comprehensive plan is not legally binding. Um, however, a required conclusion of law. For a conditional use permit in the garden, in Garden City is that the use shall be in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And the use of that conditional use permit shall also be in compliance with the vision of the comprehensive plan. In this way, uh, the Garden City code or zoning code ensures that the proposed uses. Are not only required to be compatible with the existing neighborhoods, um, but they're also progressing the vis- vision of the comprehensive plan. So the property is located within the transit oriented development node. As well as the mixed-use commercial neighborhood designation. And the staff report gave the definitions of those zoning districts. Not zoning districts, but the, um, comprehensive plan designations. Um, but essentially they're speaking to a higher residential density with commercial. Aspects that are catered to those, um, residences. The neighborhood is currently experiencing a transition. Um, East Fortieth Street consists of other service providers. Vehicle services, storage facilities and manufactured, um, or mobile home parks. However. Um, like I said, it is experiencing that transition, which is more mixed use and residential in nature. Uh, the developments that we are seeing tend to follow what the comprehensive plan has envisioned of this neighborhood. And it consists of. One of a few would be the boardwalk condominium tower, uh, multiple restaurants within the boardwalk. Application and numerous multifamily developments. While the proposal for an industry flex commercial use might not be in ideal alignment with the comprehensive plan. Um, or the direction that the neighborhood is currently taking, it should also be noted that the immediate surrounding businesses. Um, are industrial and commercial in nature, as you can see on this aerial. And these properties adjacent to the property in question tonight, um, is. Their zone C one and C two. The code states that activities that are more compatible with mixed uses. Or residential uses and minimally disruptive to the neighborhood shall be located within the C two zoning district, which this property is located in. There may be conflict between the types of uses within the industry flex. Use, um, as it is more of an umbrella type term that has a bunch of different, um, commercial uses within that. That it allows for. But the, the industry flex use might be in conflict with the adjacent R three zoning district, which is just, just to the. I'll call it northeast, uh, where my mouse is pointing. The reason why I bring this up is not only because of the purpose and function of the neighborhood and the industry flex use, but also. Garden City Code eight-two C twenty-four states that, um, all mechanical equipment emissions. Shipping indoor delivery or other outdoor activity areas shall be located a minimum of five hundred feet. From any abutting residential districts. Um, the, the proposed industry flex use on this property is about three hundred feet from the adjacent. Or most adjacent residential zoning district. But to further that discussion, uh, code does not define outdoor activity. And it leaves room for interpretation. And on the site plans that were submitted, there does not appear to be a designated area for shipping indoor delivery. Um, and the site plans do not identify where that mechanical equipment is to be placed. So there. Essentially needs to be more information to, um. Provide a review and determination on. Uh, this section of code. As far as the, uh, transportation needs list goes. Um, it identifies Osage. As being one of the, the alleyways identified in the plan. Um, it identifies Stockton as well, but because this property is along Osage Street, um. The transportation plan doesn't require for sidewalks to be, uh, installed along Osage. And in addition to that, the way the site is configured and the building on the site basically prohibits any kind of sidewalk. To be placed. On the property or even in the right of way, just due to the. Lack of setbacks and the building being on that side property line. Um, but that's not to say that other improvements cannot be made that are in the, within the vision of the Osage pedestrian and pathway. Um, so. Possible improvements could be lighting that is pedestrian oriented. Fencing that is pedestrian oriented, controlled access, landscaping and other art-like. Um, modifications, so for example, a mural, um, or actual sculptures. Something similar to what maybe Freak Alley is in Boise, for example, um, where it's a very urbanized pedestrian and bike. Friendly pathway system throughout Garden City. And so getting into code analysis, and there is the discussion regarding the six-foot tall wood fence. Which is located, uh, here on the site and I pull up the. Site plans again, so, um, it is a six-foot tall fence. It is currently located, um, on the property line. And to be in, in compliance with the transportation needs list and the vision of this pedestrian pathway. The fence either needs to be, uh, brought down to three and a half feet per the plan or set back ten feet and it can remain the six feet tall. And I believe there is a condition regarding that in the decision document, but I can. Look into that a little bit later. Yes, okay, so a condition has been drafted for the removal of all the chain link fencing on the site, including barbed wire. Um, replacement fencing shall meet current code standards. If new fencing is put up. The site, the new site plan, um, that was submitted on. In August. Shows eight parking spaces, which is compliant with current parking code. However, the site plan as shown here, um, is one of the original site plans in which the, the parking was not compliant. So I just want to confirm that the, the minimum required parking for this use is eight parking spaces to which the most recent site plan. Um, was compliant with. Um, and then to further the discussion regarding the sidewalks, code requires a five-foot wide side detached sidewalk. With a six or eight-foot wide landscape buffer to which the most recently submitted land. Site plan and landscape plan, um, showed compliance with, whereas the first. Site plan submitted on the screen now is not compliant with code. We do have a sidewalk waiver policy, um, to which. Staff does not believe the, um, the tenant is capable of obtaining, just due to the parameters within that sidewalk policy. I can pull it up for discussion later, but essentially, um, the building does not have a current occupancy permit. On file, um, and by going through a conditional use permit, it is in and of itself intensifying the use on the site. And those two things would be required in order to allow for a white, a sidewalk waiver. So there has been a condition drafted in the decision document to require. That a five-foot wide detached sidewalk with a six or eight-foot wide landscape buffer is installed, and there are. Subrequirements within that condition, um, to require that the street trees are put within that landscape buffer. And those street trees are class two or three. So long as there is approval from Idaho Power, because there are overhead utilities in that location and coordination with. Development Services staff is obtained. Um, there are also a few other conditions drafted in the decision document to which I have highlighted. And they're highlighted because they are options. Some of them need to be removed and some of them need to be picked or otherwise modified to meet. Whatever, um, the commission is wanting to determine here tonight, so, um. For example, the, under scope of the permit, number two is requiring that the five required frontage. Street trees along Osage are installed. Um. The staff report goes into where those would be required and essentially it is that eleven-foot area where, um, the six-foot tall. Fence, wooden fence along Osage is, um, that would meet code standards. Is to put the five trees back there. However, we do have, um, code requirements to where any tree installed needs to be. Planted in such a way that it has a viable, uh, future and can live. So five trees in this location while it meets code might not meet another section of code. Um, additionally. There's item number six or condition number six under prior to occupancy where it talks about that six-foot tall wooden fence along Osage Street. And it, it's essentially saying it needs to be set back ten feet. And can remain six feet tall or it has to be three and a half feet tall. And meet the standards set forth by the transportation needs list. So there is some discussion regarding these, um. Conditions, or I would, I would require that as staff, um, to discuss the, these conditions. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Mister Chairman?
Oh yeah, Commissioner Montoya.
Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate it. Under, um, prior occupancy condition number thirteen. I was a little confused by what the applicant said regarding the percentage of gross site area for landscaping. I just wanted to confirm that, so. With, uh, revision number three, are they compliant with that or will they only be in compliance if it's? Considered within the right of way as well?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Montoya, sorry for not, uh, discussing the perimeter landscaping and the five percent landscaping requirements. Let me pull up the most recent landscape plan, so we're all referencing, um, a more detailed landscape. Um, a more detailed landscape plan, um so code requires that five percent of the gross site area needs to be landscaped. This cannot include perimeter landscaping or setback landscaping. To which. Uh, most of the landscaping in this site plan is showing. Um, I believe it's about two point four percent of the site is landscaped and that includes. The areas that which. Are not technically permitted to count towards that five percent.
All right, thank you. And that. Is similar to condition fifteen where the site shall meet perimeter landscaping provisions. So. If we were to just say remove condition thirteen. Um, how would that affect fifteen with the site perimeter landscaping?
So if condition item number thirteen was removed. It. Um, it would not impact condition item fifteen, assuming that. This site plan, the most recent one from August fourteenth was. Um, what was installed. At the site, um. However, if we. Required item number fifteen, so we required the perimeter landscaping. It would increase that. Percentage of landscaping, so that two point seven percent of what is shown here currently would. Um, increase to whatever percentage that is. Um. So it makes it so that it's closer to meeting that minimum five percent requirement. Does that make sense?
Possibly.
The essentially removal of the five percent landscaping doesn't impact. The fact that they still need perimeter landscaping. It's more that item fifteen would impact the mi- the base minimum percentage provided up to the site.
So where I'm going with it is effectively, how do we state that that's okay?
How do you state that what they've proposed is okay? Um. I mean, you could simply state that as part of the scope of the permit, that's likely where I would put the condition. Um. And then removal of. If if you're not wanting. If you're okay with the site not providing five percent landscaping as required by code. Then you could remove item thirteen.
Okay.
On top of that.
Thank you. Thank you, excuse me, thank you, Commissioner Montoya, any other questions for staff? Um, simple one, and I was looking for while you were presenting. Um. Where that fence is, I was looking for how long the fence is, just to get a sense of scale. As to how far ten feet is back from the lot line, so how long is that fence, that six foot tall fence? And you guys probably said it, I just I didn't.
Fifteen feet.
Fifteen feet, okay, okay, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure, okay, I was just trying to get a sense of scale, that was it, okay.
See, it's right there.
Yeah, I can read that.
So this is saying eleven feet. I don't know what this a hundred.
Okay, and it was just the the length of that wooden fence was all, I just wanted to make sure I understood, so thank you, and thank you. Okay. That's, I think we're we're good with questions of staff. Um.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question.
Yeah, sure, Commissioner Shepherd.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Hannah, for this one, I guess I just needed to think about, think this through a little bit more about the desire for the city to make. I call it sage, but you, uh, Osage, is that what you call it? And Stockton alternate routes for businesses instead of Chindon, but also friendly to pedestrians. Um, I'm just trying to think about if fifteen feet along fence, because there's a zero setback for the build, zero bit setback for the building. And then fifteen feet of the fence there, and I'm just wondering, like, since the building is already there and taking up so much of that, like. Is this? City really gonna be? Like a stickler for that fifteen percent right there, about the only, oh, that's a helpful view, but. I guess the only thing I can really. See it being. Valid for having like a three foot fence there, or actually would be no fence at all, would be so pedestrians could step out of the way of oncoming traffic. But I don't know that the applicant would want that, um. So. My understanding is we could have a condition to to allow that fence to be there. Still at six foot or that it has to act like absolutely be either three and a half. Feet on this on the street or setback. Ten feet.
So it is an adopted um or Commissioner Shepherd. It is an adopted policy, the transportation needs list, so in not. Upholding those standards of the pedestrian path. Changes, um it wouldn't be in compliance with the policy and it would set forth a new precedent to any other. Upcoming conditional use permits or other applications.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna have a public hearing here, this, I don't think we have anybody, but is there anybody that wanted to? Provide testimony on this application? Uh, yes, you can, you have three minutes, I just, I need you to come up here and do your name and and.
I'm I'm Frank Friedrich, I'm with the with the Parshons, my only, I just wanted to talk.
Seriously, clearly state your name.
Frank Friedrich.
And your address.
Two two five five one San Vicente Avenue, San Vicente, California. Um, I just want about your fence issue, my only concern would be as. An owner and a citizen, if you have a small little setback there that's ten feet deep or a three foot high fence. It almost becomes a public safety issue. Late at night or whenever hours a day, could be the only little section, and even if it's lit. It, I mean, because I have other real estate in the area and that would be my biggest concern, and I just wanted to kind of bring that to attention, because I haven't heard that discussed. And I just, because that that would be my concern about that.
Okay.
Component, so.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, so um. You have uh an opportunity to come back up and provide a rebuttal if you'd like. Absolutely, absolutely.
Ah, oh, it must be in another file. I want to get the one up to show them. The truck turning.
No, Ed.
Truck turning, I didn't discuss the reason for not running that by being across.
That's good.
Something I didn't, I, Patrick McKeegan, uh. Um, something I didn't point out is the, if you see there, there's a kind of a little curvy truck. Right there. That is a S- US DOT standardized. Design template for uh. Box fans, think UPS box fans. There's, there's a number for it, SP twenty three or something anyway, basically twenty three point a box fan. And I just wanted to show that. With that, if we, if you impose that five that five feet along that north property line. It's gonna really, really impact being able to get anything bigger than a, than a pickup, you know, a a single. Cab pickup or automobile in and out of that space and then and limit our our pool, that's the only. Thing I think I really wanted to say is that that I skipped kind of skipped over that, that was my reasoning for. For not having it in that back area. It lines up with that overhead door, but we have an overhead door closer to the front, but. We can deal with that, also, um. Uh, mechanical units are currently a rooftop unit on the existing building, which is gonna remain. Uh, we may be putting adding some. Uh, units in the back, but they would either on the ground. We would uh screen those, if they're on the roof, they would, they'll be back on, they'll be on the part of the building that won't be visible from the street. Uh, delivery and loading, uh if we get anything as big as a, we get like a semi with forty foot three trailer, they're just gonna have to back in off of the. Off of the street. And. Do it that way.
Alright, great, thank, any further questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll close the public hearing and then move to um. Commission members discussing the application, uh Commissioner Brown. You want to start us off?
Okay, uh, first of all, I I want to commend the applicant. I'm. Very familiar with this location and the site and. The problems of Osage Street, and they've done about as good as you can do. If you're gonna let this type of bin stay there in order to comply with any reasonable. Of our setbacks and. Perimeter landscaping and those kind of requirements. You'll have to take off. Ten foot of the building. On along Osage. In other words, you'd have to take the building out. In my opinion, so, that being said. Um, now the issues that we talked about, I'm I'm favor of approving this, recommending approval of it. Uh. Uh, doing option number. Revision number three. Uh, I suspect that Commissioner Montoya is sort of, he picked up and I commend him for doing that. Um. I think we ought to go with that and with regard to my concerns about the sidewalk. Um. Essentially, since they are essentially neutral on the whole issue, we should. When we can, fit the requirements during the code and. When we go on, and we will be going on on up up Fortieth Street. Uh, we'll just have them put the sidewalks back. And put a five foot sidewalk separated from it, and that that'll that'll continue. And so I'm in favor of that, so. Uh, revision number three, including the landscaping that they have, they have in that and number three. And with regard to the other landscaping, I'm sort of going out where. Uh, Commissioner Montoya was hinting. I don't think that we should have any requirements for perimeter landscaping. It's totally impossible on the south side, because property line is where the wall is, so there's not gonna be any there. That drawing right there tells you why. You're not gonna be able to put any landscaping in there, you're gonna make their exterior storage place where. Trucks and everything. Almost unusable, like someone said. So I think we should eliminate those. Um, and. Put some kind of a. A condition that they put the landscaping that was shown on revision number three. And that takes care of what can be done on Fortieth Street, takes care of the front. Resolves the issues of the other landscaping, which is just a, would be a problem, I think. And that brings us back to the fifteen foot fence. I think we should just leave the fence at six foot on that stretch, because. I have like, I understand where you're going from, but when you look at that picture. That whole area just beyond it, it would be the only place in that whole block where there was an indentation. And I can see, I I don't see it that. Given that, if somebody is walking along there, as long as the building is there. The vehicle is just gonna have to go around where the people are. Because there's just no place, I understand what they're getting at, but I think we should allow them to just leave the six foot fence there. Dispense with the requirement for a three and a half foot fence. Right there, it would just, it would be a fifteen, three and a half foot fence for fifteen feet. And a break in that, because but the next one, the next one to the east has got chain link fencing on it. And. It's at least six feet or maybe more. And um. So that'll leave them with what they have there, which. They can use that backspace, if if we did. Require that, it would be just what I described, it would be a place that they might wind up putting rock in, but. Eat down the weeds and twice a year they'd go out and use roundup on it. Other than that, it would be a big goat head maker. Um. So. I think that takes about all the issues, sorry. And that's why I'm in favor of.
Thank you, Christian. Um. Can we have, it seems like the discussion might center around revision three, can we, can we put that back up? Thank you. Just so we're all looking at it. Okay, Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. And thank you applicants and staff again for bringing this to us, and I appreciate the compromise on the property that you all were discussing. With overachieving in the front and in order to try to save some of the need for the required required landscaping in the back. I would be in favor of not requiring that landscaping along the perimeter for the reason that is on that. Um, so the trucks can turn around, and I think it looks nice from the front, based on that rendering. And um. It's definitely an improvement to what's there now, and I appreciate your intent to. Um. Make it more beautiful and just to. Like, like try your best to like. Fit this building, which is difficult to come to fit into the compliance with the code, but I think you've done a pretty good job at trying to compromise where you can. Um. I did also have, like in my mind, I didn't bring it up, but I thought about public safety issues with that. You know, little piece of land back there. And. I I also feel that we should let the six foot fence stay because it's. That, you know, the, it's just that little piece with the building right along there and. I just, I do see it could be like a little pocket of of an area that's not visible to or easily visible and. You know, things can happen back there. So. Um. I I think that's about all I have, other than just what from my question before, just not wanting a lot of like noise and vibration in that area. Um. Due to the proximity of the residential district. Um, and I I did see that you all said that you would vet your tenants for that, so. Um. And I liked the idea to. You know, lands or like murals along that to beautify those Sage Street area. So, that's, that's what I have, I would be in favor. Of approving it also with um Commissioner Brown's suggestion with the um. With, what were we talking about taking out? Number thirteen, was it number fifteen, but the landscaping provisions. The ones that you talked about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilde.
Um, yeah, I think we're probably gonna end up somewhere close to unanimous, I um. Agree with Commissioner Brown's. Summary of the issues. Um, I think the, you know, conditions thirteen and fifteen probably should go, I would propose that those be stricken. Um. You know, there's quite a. Quite a fencing plan, but for here, um, as you can see on the site, on the landscaping site plan. Um, they're gonna do a lot of fencing, they're gonna improve this area significantly. Uh, this site in particular, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, we all probably see it all the time, it's a blacktop. Jungle, it's a, it's uh getting a sidewalk and some uh landscaping and there is gonna be a dramatic including. Thank you. Um, so uh, I think a five foot detached sidewalk is great. Um, so I'm I'm supportive of this um. Plan.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Montoya.
I agree with the fellow commissioners, um, I would say that under scope of permit. Modifying number two. To read that the landscaping is substantially, is substantially shown on revision three. So that we're capturing what's being proposed. to read that the landscaping is substantially, has substantially shown on revision three, so that we're capturing what's being proposed. Keeping in condition three under scope of permit um under prior to occupancy, removing item six and leaving the fence in as um all the commissioners have indicated. And then removing thirteen, fourteen B and fifteen. Okay, so that's where I'm at on the recommendation.
Okay. I'm completely supportive of the application and everything um my fellow commissioners have said. I'll just say that um I get uh a little bit hesitant on uh uh the the fencing piece of this. Um, I mean, that's, that's a pretty clear spot in the code um that the fencing would be three and a half feet, but I also understand the applicant's position and the commission's position on it as well. I just, you know, eventually we we want we want Osage and and Stockton to be something different than they are right now. And I think that's the purpose for the three and a half foot tall fence. Um, so um, but I'm, but I'm also gonna say that I supported staying as is um because of just the situation with this particular application and parcel and with the status of everything else that is currently there. So um, just wanted to say that. So I think all that said, I think we're we're ready to uh to do our motion. Yeah, yes.
Point of clarification, um condition item number five under prior to occupancy.
Yes.
And none of the commissioners mentioned removal or maintaining that. I just want to understand that um all existing chain link fencing and barbed wire shall still be removed despite the fencing conversations had tonight.
So um it's my understanding that and that, yes, except for this is a wood fence and maybe I'm misunderstanding why you're bringing this up. So maybe let's talk about it.
Yeah.
Um, but we're just saying the wood fence, the fifteen foot wood fence is staying, but any chain link and barbed wire will come down and there, my understanding is they're replacing all that with that other solution.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, the reason why I bring it up is because this particular section of Osage fence line has barbed wire on top.
Yep, yep. And I think they said that they would take it down. Um, the barbed wire on on top of the wooden fence, that's what you're talking about, right? Yes, yes. And I heard you guys say that you're taking that barbed wire down. Oh, on your fifteen, on your fifteen foot wood fence. Yes.
Yeah, but they don't own the.
Right, no, I understand that. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So are we good or we?
Thank you.
Yeah, that no, thank you for bringing that up. I'm glad you brought that up. So we were, everybody's clear on that. So, okay. Now I think we're ready for.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Montoya.
I move to recommend approval of CUP F Y two zero two three dash zero zero one zero applicant Chris Keith of Idaho Forty LLC for the proposal of industry flex located at one oh seven East Fortieth Street, Idaho County. And with the following changes to the decision document prepared by staff, under scope of permit, modifying con- um condition number two to state that the landscaping shall be substantially the same as shown on revision number three provided by applicant. Under prior to occupancy, condition number six be removed. Condition number thirteen be removed. Commit condition fourteen B be removed and condition fifteen be removed.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Everybody in favor, say aye please. Aye, so there's no nays on this one, so we're approved, you're approved. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Um, any other discussion items amongst the commission or staff? Okay, so we'll say that we are adjourned then. And thanks again, everybody.